Sign and sheet outside the door if you haven't already, it looked like most everybody had. Um, ha- with having said that, allow me to call the Monday, October twenty-third uh, meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission uh, to order and ask for approval.
Mr. Guyer?
Here.
Mr. Ella?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Gothard?
Here.
Mr. Henson?
Here. Thank you, Sarah. Uh, the next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes from our June twenty-sixth meeting. Did anyone have any amendments or edits to the minutes presented? Seeing none, I'll ask for approval.
Motion to approve.
Every time.
Uh, Mr. Guyer?
Epstein.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you, Sarah. The next item on tonight's agenda is a quasi judicial hearing for a planned unit development request in case one.
We need to approve the agenda first.
Tonight's agenda. We're off this one start, guys. I apologize, I skipped the very first uh, item on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of tonight's agenda. May I entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Sorry.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. The next item on tonight's agenda is a continued quasi judicial hearing for a PUD request in case one, two thousand twenty-three, twenty uh, PUD. With this being a quasi judicial hearing, I do have um, an outline that I need to recite uh, to the audience tonight. Um, first, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing in deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not and will not hear opinions, just facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application, the applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone is in opposition, I'm sorry, if anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium, after being recognized, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive and evidence or questions, questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much. And with that, I'll ask staff to present their case.
Thank you. Um, this is case one, twenty, twenty-three PUD. The applicant is Michael Dungus of Core Resources, who's representing Anderson Land Holdings LLC, who is a property owner. The location is at sixty-six ninety-four and sixty-seven hundred Clough Pike, and the zoning there is E Retail. The request is a PUD, which is an overlay on the property of planned unit development. It's for parking lot modifications, dumpster enclosure, and existing tent to remain until the permit has expired. The impervious, a PUD is based off of an impervious surface ratio of the properties. If it is over sixty percent, it's required to go through a PUD hearing before the zoning commission. So, the property is sixty-six ninety-four, Clough Pike is at seventy-five point seven percent ISR, and then at sixty-seven hundred Clough Pike, this is at eighty-six point two percent ISR. The change of use of the second building, not the pub, but the building next door, to Bourbon Bar, that has been withdrawn from this application. But the parking improvements are still on that property, so it's still considered part of the application. Just the change of use to the Bourbon Dar is not being considered at this, at this, uh, with this particular application. This was also continued from June, so the staff report presentation will focus mainly on the new information and changes since June. Uh, with that, we'll skip through the history. The history is in the staff reports if you all wanted to grab one outside. If we are out, it is on our website, uh, if you wanted to follow along. But again, the last hearing on this was on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, where the case was continued due to an incomplete application and the zoning commission had questions, as well as uh, qu- questions and concerns raised by the audience. So just to recap, this is the property map. Uh, this is Clough Pike here, this is the Anderson Township Pub, this is the building that used to be SDH Controls, the Family Pet Center to the north, and then the Quinter to the south. This is an aerial photo of the property, the main entrance into the pub, the front door here, and then the shared parking in the back. This is the zoning map, the properties along Clough Pike are zoned E Retail, and then to the east is zoned A-two, which is a single family, and then to the west is B C U P, which is Single Family Community Unit Plan. With this map, we also uh, included because of the topography, as well as you can tell, there's steep topography on both sides of um, the business district. The topography rises to the east, uh, and there are residential homes on, uh, to the east, um, and the Clough Creek runs along Clough Pike, obviously. So these are some of the drone shots that we took, looking back at Clough Pike. We were sitting back in the back of the parking lot. Again, the existing pub, existing parking, the outdoor patio, um, this is one of the tents here, and then this is the area that was part of the SDH Controls to the south. This is just an overhead of the parking in the rear that's also under consideration. This was the other tent, um, that had been installed. This is the freestanding sign that's in existence, or existing currently, the Anderson Township Pub sign, and then this, uh, this sign used to be the SDH Control sign, and then they also have a reader board sign. This is the front patio for the pub. Uh, the front of the pub, the front of the building next door, SDH, or what used to be SDH Controls, and this property is currently vacant. This is looking back toward the back of the parking lot. This is one of the freestanding, or I'm sorry, the, one of the wall signs that had been installed. Um, the applicant now has applied for permits and these have been permitted, um, that was brought up at the last meeting. The tents in the back. This is the property next door, this is looking toward the Quinter, um, this is an area where the parking is proposed to be expanded. And again, just looking back at Clough Pike. These are the two wall signs, and again, these have been permitted now, and zoning certificates have been issued. This is on the back of the building, and this is on the north facade of the building. So this is the proposed um, parking lot layout. I know it's a little bit difficult for the audience to see, but if you can kind of watch my mouse here, this is the main entrance into the parking lot. There is shared parking uh, between the pub and the Family Pet Center, however, there is no formal easement for the shared parking, it's just an informal. So all the parking counts do not include this area here. The property line, which is very, it's hard to see, this is the actual property line for the pub. So all of the parking in the staff report is the parking that's specifically on the pub property and the building next, uh, next door. There is two-way circulation proposed uh, around the parking area. There is a variance request uh, for these parking spaces here, it is zero foot setback versus the required ten-foot setback. And then the parking spaces are proposed to be nine by eighteen instead of nine by nineteen, which is required. On this particular site plan, this is an existing tent, this is an existing tent, those are proposed to remain until the current permit expires, which I believe is in December. Other improvements include interior landscaping, islands, um, and dumpster enclosure, and we do have pictures of that. The previous layout that you saw in June had a one-way entrance coming between the pub and the, and the building to the south, which was the Bourbon Bar. Again, that has been removed from this application until the applicant can secure additional parking. So that may be a later phase, but it's not being considered tonight. This is the proposed dumpster enclosure. The lighting plan, which is compliant with the township's regulations. Since the property to the east is zoned for single family, our lighting requirements are point-one-foot candles at the property line, and this does meet those uh, requirements. And the maximum height is twenty-four feet, and that's also, uh, does meet those requirements. So, uh, again, the zoning commission is hearing this because of the PUD requests, um, because the properties are both over sixty percent. So as far as zoning resolution compliance, we put this statement at the beginning of the presentation and in the zoning, uh, and the staff report, the, the parking lots both are non-conforming. They were constructed prior to the current parking regulations. So, it's understood that retrofitting an existing parking lot to meet our current standards is very difficult. So, we evaluated that with that in mind, they're trying to bring the, the parking closer to compliance, but it is not being full compliance. So we did identify the areas that are not in full compliance with the parking regulations. Um, the first article uh, is regarding the parking spaces that are along the east property line, they're setback at, at zero feet versus ten feet. The um, screening, we require at, at least a minimum of four-foot tall screening and a solid screen of landscaping or vegetation or fence along areas adjacent to residential. And again, this is that area with the zero foot back, so that buffer is not being provided. However, the topography and existing vegetation does provide a buffer to the, and the residential homes are, um, at a much higher elevation. And then Article five point three, D-three-A, again, requires parking spaces to be nine by nineteen, they are requesting nine by eighteen to maximize the parking on the site. Um, the drive aisles are twenty-four for two-way traffics, twenty-four feet wide, so they are complying. Um, the next article is uh, wheel stops and curbs are not shown on the site plan, and those are required. And then Article five point five signage, um, at the time, the staff report went out, we did not have zoning certificates for the wall signage, but those have been issued. The freestanding signage is non-conforming, it's too tall and too large, um, so we are recommending that that sign be brought into uh, consistency with adopted design guidelines of the township, uh, so more in keeping with the neighborhood retail area, and we have more information on that, uh, in the presentation. So we also look at the applicable plans, the comprehensive plan, we went over this at the last meeting in June, we felt these were the areas that the plan was consistent, uh, neighborhood retail, uh, economic vitality, and then other areas of, of the comprehensive plan, land use and development chapter. Um, the business has been a staple in the area for quite some time, and is compatible with what is recommended for the Clough Pike Business District. So we feel that it is consistent with comprehensive plan. The trails plan, uh, the township installed sidewalks along Clough Pike in twenty-fourteen, so there is a proposal to add striping to connect the sidewalk along the roadway to the front of the restaurant. And then the design guidelines, uh, there are areas of the, the design guidelines that are, uh, the proposal is consistent, um, the, the pub has been uh, rejuvenated since it was purchased by the current owners, it has been painted, there has been some new wall signage, and then the proposal does have landscaping. They are, not on the site plan, but in the letter, identified parking lot connections to the, to the properties to the north and to the south. We did receive a lan- or a site plan this week that did show that, uh, but we are recommending if, if the board or if the zoning commission approves this, uh, to add a condition that that goes into effect with those properties to the north and south, where to develop a cross-access be, uh, considered. And then lighting, um, again, at the time, lighting was not provided, uh, a compliant lighting plan, but that has been resubmitted and is compliant. With signage, uh, our Clough Pike Business District Plan as well, which is incorporated into our comp plan, as well as our design guidelines, encourage lower monument-style signage, especially in our neighborhood business districts. One of those reasons is to bring the signage down below the power lines. Also, it helps, uh, bring signage down, uh, below trees, street trees. Um, the trees have been removed in front of this, uh, the ATP, but bringing that signage down below the power lines is more consistent with other businesses that have been, um, renovated in that area, those have also lowered their signage, such as the American Legion. They, uh, there's one other one, uh, escaping me, um, but the signage has been brought down lower to neighborhood retail scale versus a highway commercial area. So these are the areas of the design guidelines. And then some of these have, um, a recommendation, some of these have been addressed since the meeting, and then since even the staff report went out, um, but we did complete, uh, uh, keep those on the presentation. There are fifteen standards, um, to evaluate when we're looking at a PUD request, and I can just highlight the areas that we felt, um, were not compliant. So again, number one, compliance with zoning, those are the variance requests for the parking areas. Um, we felt like it was consistent with the township adopted plans, except for the freestanding sign. The staff does recommend a lower monument-style sign. Compatibility with surrounding properties, we did feel like that use physical and, and features of the property, uh, will enable protection of surrounding property, that's number four. Uh, the other areas we felt that were compliant are, are listed or not applicable. The one I did want to touch on was acoustical privacy, that's number, um, number ten. The applicant did submit an acoustical study for this, which came with recommendations of having the band placed where the sound from the speakers would be pointed toward the building, as well as lowering the volume of, of the music. So, um, staff feels that if this is approved, that recommendations from the sound study should be included as a condition. Again, we've already touched on the, the variances, staff was recommending approval where the ten-foot setback to zero-foot setback on the rear of the property, just because of the topography of the site and the vegetation, as well as a reduction of the sizes from nine by nineteen to nine by eighteen. This has been done in area, other areas of the township. Some communities do have nine by eighteen as their standard parking spot. While it's not ideal, um, it does work, it does function, and this would enable them to maximize the parking in that, in that tight area. And as we said, this is a non-conforming lot, and they're trying to bring it into compliance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And we did have, if the, if the zoning commission, uh, chose to approve this, we had four recommended conditions.
Paul, thank you for the summary, appreciate that. Do we have any questions for staff from the commission?
Can you take me through or take us through the, uh, the tents, the not, not having certificates, then having them, and how long, 'cause I see like six months on here, and then you said like December, it's a little bit confusing.
So, originally, we had issued a zoning certificate, the, the tents with that went up without permits during COVID, basically. And they were, the history of that is in the staff report, when we were notified of the tents and when we came, uh, realized, or, or the tents were brought to our attention. So, before the June zoning commission meeting, we did issue a zoning certificate for the tents, thinking that a decision on this project would be made at the June meeting, and the zoning commission would decide on the tents, or whether they should stay up or they should come down. Then of course, the case was continued. So, a temporary tent, um, is permitted to be up by, for six months by the building department. That's how long the building department issues for temporary tent. After the six months, the tent needs to come down, or a new application must be made to the building department to have it re-inspected, to make sure that the tent's still meeting the building code.
So on the timeline, it says in March, though, they were deemed unsafe.
Correct. We issued a zoning certificate, I, I believe it was in, um, it was in April or May. They applied for building permits, I believe in June, and the applicant can clarify this timeline. That's why I believe the building permit will expire in December.
But they're currently safe.
Correct.
Brian?
Uh, yes, just one, uh, question. Paul, you had mentioned, uh, several variances for the parking configuration, and you mentioned that, uh, there was not the barriers around the landscaping?
Correct.
Is that something being fixed, or is that something that's a variation as well?
I would ask the applicant that as well, because we did have some, the site plans, we had them submitted, and then they had been modified. Some of the items had been modified once our staff report went out.
Thanks. Mr. Guyer?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Um, Paul, do you know how many spaces are there now? How many parking spaces?
So that gets back to, the area was paid fairly shortly after the new owners took i- or purchased the property. So we did not do a full count of what's currently there. And I did somewhat skip over that in the staff report. But this was an effort to bring the property into compliance, and so, um, they're permitted a range of thirty-seven to forty-five spaces, and they're showing, uh, forty-one spaces for the pub. So they, what they are showing is compliant.
Okay. And then you mentioned cross-access, um, between the lots. Looking at the existing site plan, the cross-access, that would be to the south or to the north, basically, the rear of the property, correct?
To both. So there, there does need to be a cross-access agreement between the two properties, even though they're under same ownership, they are separate parcels. So that is one, one aspect, and that was submitted with their, with their plan. In our staff report, we recommended cross-access easement be provided to the Family Pet Center or to the property to the north, as well as to the property to the south, should those go through a zoning process. If they go through a zoning process, we would recommend the zoning commission make sure that an easement is in place for that cross-access. We did receive a site plan this, um, late last week, that showed this identified right through here, and this area through here as their, uh, cross-access.
Good.
So we, we did receive that, it was, it was shown in their letter, it was not shown on the site plan, but we received a site plan late this last week that did identify that.
Okay.
And that is one of our suggested conditions.
Thank you.
Let's have a follow-up on the parking. You had mentioned all this, all the parking along the pet center, because the property will lose direction with that, so.
Correct.
You're not fitting your account.
Correct.
Mr. Gothard?
Question as a staff, thank you.
Uh, Paul, I apologize, I'm following up on Jay's question about the parking. So the off-site parking spaces are or, or not included in the calculation to meet the minimum?
These are not included, these spaces along the Family Pet Center. The spaces that are included, there are a couple up against the, the building, and then the spaces on the pub's property, and then the spaces on what was going to be the Bourbon Bar, so this is technically their off-site parking spaces.
So they are, though, able to meet the minimums with their onsite parking?
For the pub, correct.
Right. Talk about the rest at a future date.
Correct.
And this is also just a follow-up, the retention wall has not, and grading plan has not been submitted?
The grading plan was not submitted, in their, in their letter, they determined that a retaining wall was not needed, um, in the back here for these parking spaces or for the dumpster enclosure.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, the applicant is welcome to, to come up and make a presentation if they have one.
Good evening, uh, Mike Dungus, I'm, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, we're, uh, their contractor, uh, trying to help them, uh, initially to build the Bourbon Bar, but now try to get them in compliance with, um, the issues that they have at their existing space, which is ATP. So, um, thank you all for your time, thank you staff for the thorough report and the assistance on navigating this, uh, we hope to, with this, um, at least come to a conclusion on the issues at ATP. With the Bourbon Bar, we spent the last several months talking to a lot of the neighbors, trying to figure out how we could get additional parking, and we have yet to come up with, um, a easement or additional, uh, property to, um, add another establishment there, so for now that is on hold. Um, but in the meantime, uh, the property owners and the, the business owner at ATP, um, desire to get that property into compliance, um, and be in good standing with the township and the neighborhood. A lot of challenges on the site, as we talked about a few months ago, um, and as the staff mentioned, um, in their presentation and their report, um, so we are asking for a few variances, uh, to try to make this work. They've put, uh, quite a bit of investment into the property already, and quite a bit more to do this, but they want to, they want to make it right and, um, be, continue to be a, a good, um, business owner in the, um, in the district. A couple, to address a few of the, the staff's concerns and, um, the board's questions, the monument sign out front, um, they, they do desire to get in compliance with that, the reason we hadn't done a design yet is because it's still up in the air as to whether the Bourbon Bar will be built or not. So they did, we kind of paused all marketing branding efforts associated with the Bourbon Bar, um, which included designing what the sign would look like. So for that, I guess I would ask for a, um, conditional approval that, I mean, in the next couple months, at least within the next four or five months, I would think at most, uh, we're going to know whether they proceed with the Bourbon Bar or not. Um, so if it's a conditional approval and they proceed with the Bourbon Bar, the sign will get, um, permitted, um, and be in compliance, and if they decide not to go with the Bourbon Bar, um, then the sign will be designed just for ATP. And we stated in the letter that we anticipate all of these changes, whether the Bourbon Bar goes forward or not, um, will be done within the next twelve months, so that should give us sufficient time, um, to validate whether we can get sufficient parking, um, close enough to the site, uh, to develop that other space or not. The tents, uh, I know it's been a big issue, uh, they are currently, uh, they do have an active permit, uh, it actually expired, or was going to expire at the beginning of this month, they got a continuance, um, from Hamilton County Building Department, uh, so it's actually good till next April eleventh, I believe. Um, it was a hundred and eighty days from October fourteenth, um, and they will not, they have told me and promised me they will not keep it up without a permit, um, they understand the, the consequences of doing that and why, um, it is important to have one. Long-term, the objective would be, um, if the Bourbon Bar's built, or once the Bourbon Bar is built, to, um, remove those tents and put more of a, a permanent structure up. But until they know, if the Bourbon Bar's built, they're going to add additional outdoor seating there, so until they understand how much outdoor seating there is between the two spaces, they don't know how big they want their outdoor structure to be at ATP, uh, which is why they got a continuance on, uh, the permit for those tents for the time being. Uh, cross-access, um, I do have, um, an updated site plan, the only thing that it shows different, um, from what your plans in the packet show is just some dash lines, pretty much exactly where Mr. Drury had shown on the backside of where, uh, they would grant cross-access to their properties, um, to the north or south, uh, to allow them to come through, so I can pass these out. through, so I can pass these out. Uh, so, yeah, there's just a dotted line. It kind of barely squeezed in there along the backside. We were trying to figure out how to do that without taking up any more of the parking right now, because we're pretty tight on it to begin with. But because the drivelanes were made twenty-four feet anyways, it would just be a matter of coming through the, what is the east side of the property by the dumpster enclosure and moving up through the north. Did I miss anything?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, on the, the contenders, has that been documented to the staff?
I just got it today, so I can send it to them. Yep. They had told me they had gotten it last week. I asked for verification. I got it this afternoon, the copy of the permit.
And as far as the bourbon bar and the signage, is it anticipated their share assigned for two different businesses?
Uh, they would be together in, in some capacity.
Would be a non-assigned to the bourbon bar?
Uh, they'd like to put them together, kind of like this was, but within compliance of the zoning regulations.
Yes. So, there's a pretty wide gap between ATP and what would be the bourbon bar. Was that ever looked at for potential parking, or is there any desire to connect those two structures in the future?
Uh, no desire to connect them. That, as the bourbon bar was designed, would be their outdoor patio area, and to provide a little bit easier access to the back of the bourbon bar, the previous plan showed a drive path going through there as well. So, there was not room for parking based off of that design.
Okay.
Mr. Uwe? Yes. Graphically, it looks like you're planning to curb around the new landscape islands. Is that true?
Around the landscape islands, yes.
Okay. And then, as staff mentioned, yeah, there's parking block requirements and curb requirements on the zoning. Would you, in essence, bring the entire parking lineup to the zoning?
I think, I guess my request would be is putting them along the east side. That perimeter seems suitable to me. I, if we have to, we will. My preference would be to not put them in those middle rows, just because of the challenge that creates when snow clearing, or, you know, if we do have a band, there's really not a place to park a trailer without taking up six spots then versus being able to pull through. So, it would be my preference on the center parking islands to not have bumpers and just with, as tight as that site is, it's been designed so that, you know, large box trucks for deliveries can navigate through, but if there's one there unloading, everybody, anybody else trying to get through could be, could be backed up without being able to, without any of the other delivery trucks being able to pull through. So, that, that would be my preference, is to put wheel stops along the perimeter on the east side and not in the middle parking islands.
That's what would be required, just around the...
Okay. The perimeter?
Around the perimeter, through the perimeter, and then a curb around the landscaping island.
Okay.
And then, in the striped areas, that would be no parking zones that isn't landscape islands. How would that be sort of regulated that someone isn't going to park there? I think that's twenty-four feet. Urban landscaping provides that guarantee?
Y- yeah. There, there are light poles in there, so we would put some, probably put some bollards up to protect it, or, you know, a foundation that comes out a little bit just to protect the light pole. But policing the parking is, is really the only way. My concern with trying to cut that off too much is, and while the, the access lane is wide enough, if you put a curb around just those locations, it could make it a little bit more challenging to get through there, is why they didn't have a curb.
Would you be willing to sort of do like a raised area and not just a single curb, but an entire thing for those two areas and then straight there?
You're talking, you're speaking to the two areas towards the east on the backside? Yeah, if that was necessary.
Like a raised island, okay. That's all the questions. Thank you.
I don't have any additional questions, but...
Follow-up, is there a formal parking agreement with the pet store?
No, no, there's not. So, there is a, an informal one to where they allow them to park there, but there's not been a formal agreement signed.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none at this point, if any members of the audience would like to come up to the podium and speak in favor and provide testimony in favor of the project, you're welcome to. Scene one? Are you in favor of the project?
Yes.
Come on up. Please remember to state your name and address.
Sorry.
Sure, sure.
No, or do you want me to wait?
As relate to the compliance of the project, yes.
So, hi, I'm Chris, I'm Christine Shekels. The address is six eight nine four Old Chapel Drive. My husband, Paul, and I own the property, own the land that butts up to the property that's in discussion. I guess that's on the east side. Not real good with directions. But anyway, we own that property. Our main concern is the noise level, and it was a problem with the previous owner. It's been a problem with the current owner with regard to the level of the music, the loudness of the music. Now, you referenced a letter that, from an acoustic engineer, that had recommended improved acoustic, acoustic privacy. I'd like to better understand that. In listening to what you had said, Paul, in the beginning of the meeting, you said that speakers were going to be pointed toward the building and, as well as lowering the volume. Is that what we're calling the improved acoustic privacy?
That was, there was a recommendation in the port, in the report that was submitted.
Okay. You know, we've lived with this for several years as far as the level of the, the music coming up that hillside toward our house. And we have expressed both to the previous owner and now to the current owner, you know, we've asked that volume be turned down, and it's not happened. And they'll say recently it was, well, it's a band, we can't really turn down the volume. So, we have a real concern about this, and both Paul and I want to make sure that you know that we have a concern about it and that the concern has been noted. That's really all I have to say. Anyone has any questions about that?
Thank you. If we have any other audience members tonight who wish to speak in favor of the project, the floor is open. Seeing no additional in favor, if we have any audience members who wish to speak against or not in favor of the project, you're welcome to, to come up to the podium. Remember to ask your questions directly to the commission.
My name is Robert Franco at twenty-four thirty-two Royal View Court, and we're in the closest house to the property, up the hill in the back of the property. I was here last time, and so, as you know, my concern is also the acoustic privacy issue, which is a requirement that the township has, that, that this is addressed, is my understanding. So, I, we have the letter from the engineer, the acoustical engineer, and I think, you know, that was done more or less at, at our urging, and I'm glad that we have it. I do, and I'm only going to really, tonight, since you're familiar with the issue, address the letter from the engineer. I have a couple of comments, then I have a couple of questions. So, it, it says in the letter that there's been an improvement in the situation, and I think that's actually a quote from me. But I want to make sure you understand that the improvement that I was talking about was not the band. Under the previous owner, we used to have drunks screaming in the parking lot, you know, at one and two AM. Under the new owner, we don't have that, and that's certainly a good thing. But the main problem, as just was stated, is the noise from the band, and that, that has not gotten any better with the new owner, and I think it's actually more frequent. Another thing the letter mentions are the factors that might attenuate the sound from the property. There, there are woods, there are some distance parking lot. I can tell you from years of experience that it doesn't work, that in our family room, with the doors and windows closed, we can hear the band. We have to turn up the television louder than we normally would. So, yeah, the woods are there, they've always been there, but they really, they really don't do the job of, of attenuating the sound. So, there were some suggestions or recommendations made by the, by the engineer. So, one of the recommendations was to turn the band to rather facing south, it would face southeast. And if the, you know, if the expert thinks that would help, then sure, let's give it a try. But when I read that paragraph, I was, you know, it, the wording wasn't as clear as it might have been, and I just wanted to make sure that this change is something that will be new going forward, that it's not something that's already been done, because if it's already been done, it didn't work. So, I, one of the questions I have is whether this is a new change that will be instituted going forward. In that case, sure, let's give it a try. So, the other question I have is not, not mentioned by the engineer, and I was a little surprised that it wasn't, and that is, what about a physical barrier? Either a wall of some sort or a shell between the band and the residential properties that would block or absorb the sound? It seems like that's a natural, relatively easy thing to do, but it's not mentioned. So, my question, and I don't know if the engineer's here tonight, is what is his thinking on that? You know, why are they not considering a physical barrier? The only other thing I want to say is that most of the letter, the entire second paragraph, deals with the bourbon bar and what would happen if there was a bourbon bar and a bourbon patio there, and then they would move the band there, is the recommendation. And, you know, that might really help, because it would be further away, and part, at least part of the ATP building would be a shield from the properties. But like we just heard, that may or may not happen, and it's, it's just simply not relevant to the preceding, proceeding tonight and the proposal that's being made now. So, I'm not against trying moving the band direction as long as it's a new thing that hasn't been tried before. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other audience members who wish to speak against the proposal? Seeing none, the applicant is welcome to come up and rebut any of the testimony. If you do not wish to do so, the commission may ask some additional questions.
Yeah, so, I think the first question on whether has, whether this orientation has been tried before, to my knowledge, it has not. The band has either set up in, or like towards the building and pushed that direction or to the east, I guess, or, or directly to the south. How they normally do it, I, I can't say. I think they moved it a little bit, but I know a lot of times the sound projects out. As far as a wall, that was a similar question that I had for the sound engineer. While that could help, the size and magnitude of a wall to make any difference wasn't going to be feasible. I mean, there are already other buildings behind it, and you'd have to put the, the wall or barrier behind the band and really just hope that it reduces some of the acoustic vibration off of the building. But to make it a feasible size, as small as that wall would be, it, they didn't think it would make a substantial difference.
Commission, did you have any follow-up questions?
Actually, for staff, about the noise, I think we discussed this in June. When is the township's noise requirement used relative to outdoor entertainment?
Township doesn't have noise resolution for outdoor entertainment. The noise resolution that's in effect is only for construction noise, and that's between the hour, it says no construction noise between the hours of eleven PM and seven AM. But there's no other township resolution for outdoor noise.
So, have we stated that? Is it out of the purview of the zoning commission?
It is a condition of consideration with a PUD request, so that's why it is being discussed. And that was our number... Number ten, the adequacy of the provisions of visual and acoustical privacy. So, it can be considered as part of a PUD request.
Any additional questions? Hearing no further comments, and if the commission doesn't object, I'll close the public hearing on case number one, two thousand twenty-three PUD, and we can choose to take this under consideration and deliberate it tonight. Any motions, if there are any?
Well, I guess before motion, I guess my concern is, we haven't ruled or, or set guidelines with sound before. I personally am a sound engineer. I'd like to see the parties and the neighbors all work together. It sounds like we've had a first step, but there's still work to be done relative to that.
I would agree with those comments. I do think the case was simplified a lot, removing the bourbon bar, because basically now we're talking about parking configuration and signage. That's what we're talking about. And then, we have this, also this issue of the noise, which has been raised a couple of times. So, I have concerns about the noise, but this, these variances or these changes, which basically they added some blacktop to the parking lot, don't really change the situation that's been going on for years, if not decades there. And I do, I do appreciate the attempt to maybe look at that and do some reconfiguration. When I was there yesterday, coincidentally, there was somebody playing the guitar, and I sat in the back of the parking lot and could hear it, but it was not that obvious to me. It's somewhat irrelevant. I don't live there and don't have to deal with it every day. But I do think there's some wisdom to the thought of, and it's nothing within our purview, but just of trying to address this stuff of how reasonable is it to have a full-blown band outside? You know, that's just a question. I don't think I have an answer for it, and I don't think this board does either, but something of maybe the bands could play inside and the single acoustical player could be outside. I just think that's something that the ownership could consider. As far as the stuff we can deal with, the parking and the signage, I'm satisfied with what's been presented as subject to the staff conditions, with the addition that this tent that needs to be, as we've all agreed, that's going to go away when the permit's up, that should be removed from the plan, because it's still shown on the plan as tents to remain, which I'm hearing they're not to remain. So, I'd say we, the motion should... to remain, which I'm hearing they're not to remain, so I'd say the motion should include that condition to remove that.
Mr. Guyer, do you have any...
Okay.
We're good.
Yeah, I think I echo most of what Mr. Ellis said. I'm a little less on board with the pushing off of the signage. I kind of think that's something they really should address now, and if the bourbon bar happens, they can work that out with staff as they go, but that's not really the best reason to not take care of that now. So I do recommend keeping that in as a conditional improvement.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm sitting far away from the microphone as well. I was just saying that condition one needs to, I would like to see that stay into the condition for approval mostly, but having said that, that's really the body of my comments. Any further discussion? Seeing none. If there is a motion, I would entertain it.
I'll try and make a motion on this one, then everybody can jump in if you think it's needed. I would recommend make a motion to approve the PUD request for the parking lot modifications, dumpster enclosure, and for the tents to remain until their permit expires, which we were told is in April, and that the requested variances concerning the parking also be approved, which included a zero setback and the allowance of nine by eighteen parking spaces, and this approval is subject to the four conditions recommended by staff in the staff report, in addition to the additional condition of removing the indicated tents on the site plan.
I did have one thing to bring to your attention that I just realized, it didn't include this in the staff report. So with the freestanding sign, staff's recommendation was that it be lowered to maximum of ten feet high, consistent with the design guidelines. So this was a shared sign between two properties. Our square footage allowance is based on the frontage, on your frontage, so if, if we include both properties, they would be allowed a sixty-six square foot sign. If you're only including like the pubs property, they would only be allowed a fifty-foot, a fifty-square foot sign. So just to clarify, are you okay with having both properties and using this?
Yes, so there's going to be some discretion in that condition that they bring the sign into compliance that you're going to have to do, Paul, on this to determine, and you're going to give them the reasonable amount of time in your discretion to rather, they're going to have two or one, and if it's one, you'll follow the rules with one, and if it's two, you'll follow that rule.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, I'm not sure we are on the same page.
Thank you.
Are you spending any time, remember on the figure one business is in term for this?
No, I was looking at subject to staff's discretion. So we can't.
I mean, my really thought would be they deliberately took the bourbon bar out of it, so we're not to consider it, so I'm under the opinion it's a one business at this point.
I would concur. You know, that we need to kind of look at it as a single, with a timeframe that allows them to fulfill their business plan, and not then they bring it into compliance. And then the other, Mr. Ellis, if maybe you could add something about the curbs and wheel stops shall be, you know, designed and installed to meet current zoning requirements. I would add that on the curbs and wheel stops, and also add a reasonable timeframe that staff will determine the appropriate sign to approve. Are you looking for a number like six months?
Let's just make it determinable, the tents, people.
Okay. Signs will be resolved at the same time that the tents are.
Sorry, you have that. I would second that motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing for a future land use map change in case two, 2023 LUP, for 1291 and 1303 Eight Mile Road. Paul, are you presenting tonight's staff report?
Yes, thank you. As Mr. Chairman stated, this is case two, 2023 P, and this is not a, this is not a PUD, this is an LUP, land use plan. The applicant is Josh Blatt, on behalf of John Henry Homes, on behalf of Eight Mile Development Company LLC, property owner. Again, the location for this request is at 1291 and 1303 Eight Mile Road. This is a request to approve a comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment. It's currently identified as single-family residence in our 2022 comprehensive plan, and the request is to change it to transitional residence. A transitional residence land use category would allow for a future zone change from C, single-family, which is currently zoned to DD, multifamily, again, for this property as well as additional parcels. The overall plan includes the parcels that are listed here, and the overall plan is for the construction of townhomes. So a little bit of site history for this property. The current, the current vacantly vacant parcels, there were two single-family homes on each lot. These were purchased in 2023 by the current owner, Eight Mile Development, and they were intending to combine the adjacent parcels, again, to change the zoning from single-family to transitional residence for the purpose of constructing townhomes, and I think it would be best if I just go to the Cages maps. So these were 1291 and 1303 Eight Mile Road. To the north is Clough Pike, to the south here is Beechmont Avenue. Cherry Lane is just off of the, the map here to the south. These homes and structures have all been removed, and these are the two parcels that are under consideration tonight. This is the aerial of the site, these were the remnants of the basements and the drive, and again, the homes that used to be there, and these are the two parcels. Just to the north here is Windstone Court, surrounding homes are all single-family. So this is our 2022 future land use map that's in our comprehensive plan. The orange shade is transitional residence, and it's already been identified for transitional residence. The brownish here is also a transition between the general retail mixed use on Beechmont Let's go to the site photos here. These are some drone shots that we took. This is Cherry Lane and the single-family homes on Cherry Lane, so basically we're looking toward the west, and this is the site that where the homes were. This is just a higher-up shot of the same area. This is looking north along Eight Mile, this is Eight Mile here, this is where one of the homes was, and then the other home, the driveway that was there. And again, these are the two parcels that are under consideration, looking back toward Cherry Lane, Beechmont Avenue, off in the distance. And these are just some site photos of the existing vegetation on the site, some of the trees, this is looking north on Eight Mile Road, looking back toward Cherry Lane. Again, the homes on Cherry Lane, and this is the driveway that was for that one single-family home, looking north along Eight Mile. This is looking opposite Eight Mile, this is looking on the east side of Eight Mile. So again, this is Cherry Lane, and the proposed drive would be in this general vicinity, it lines up with the driveway across the street. So these are the two parcels in question tonight that are proposed to be changed. This, these parcels here are part of the larger development that is proposed. Again, the development that's proposed are townhouses, a total of thirty-six units. These, this would be a private drive that would come in, dead end to the private drive, and then a T-turnaround, and then the detention to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of the development. This building here would have a front on to Eight Mile Road, however, would be accessed, and the garages would be from the rear. This building here, the garages would be from the front, and they would face the private drive, and then all of these would be front entry garages, and the rear of the property would face Cherry Lane. This is the landscaping plan that is proposed, landscaping along the frontage along Eight Mile, as well as a buffer between the development and Cherry Lane, and also along the periphery, periphery of the site. So with a future land use map amendment, we haven't had one for quite some time, so the intent of tonight's meeting is to determine if this proposed change is compatible with the surrounding area. Our comprehensive plan does a good job of laying out different standards for the zoning commission to consider when, when changing a future land use map. So on page forty-nine of the comprehensive plan, it identifies land use guidelines when an amendment is considered, and I won't read through all of those, but those are in the staff report. And just to go back to transitional residence, the definition of transitional residence is defined as moderate density detached or tashed housing that provides a transition from single-family residential, and in this situation would be to the north as well as to the, to the east on Eight Mile and the homes there on Cherry Lane, although they are identified to potentially go to higher density in our comprehensive plan, to the retail on Beechmont. So those are the items that we should evaluate with this type of use, and then specific to transitional residential use, there's also bullet points. The use reflects the foundational goals of the comp plan, ensure the overall density is compatible with adjacent developments in terms of lot sizes, density, character, and scale, that the use, it may include residential, attached residential units, sidewalks and walkways are provided to connect, landscape buffers, and then it will be a different housing choice that might not be offered in the, in the area. These are the chapters that should be considered in making a decision to change the future land use, and the housing chapter, we identify articles that we felt that were relevant to this request as far as, as well as land use and development, so then chapter four and chapter seven. So staff felt that the transitional residence, and I should back up on the history because I may have skipped over this, so back in 2019, because this isn't the first request on this property, there was a request by the current owner, or not the current owner, but the previous owner to change this area to transitional residence, and that was approved, and that was updated in our comprehensive plan. At that time, there was a proposal for condo building and then single-family. That development never moved forward. And then the last development request was for just a single-family neighborhood with thirty-five, thirty-seven homes, thirty-seven homes, and that never went forward either. So that a zone change was not needed for that, that's why that never came before the zoning commission, it was the standard subdivision that didn't need a zone change. So now the request is for attached units, attached townhomes with similar density to what C zoning district would allow, they are only requesting thirty-six units versus what was formally proposed at thirty-seven units, but since it is an attached product, it does require zone change to multifamily versus single-family. So staff's recommendation was number one, that it is appropriate to change from single-family to transitional residence, it's compatible with surrounding uses, continuing the transitional land use designation will allow the applicant to apply for a zone change for attached self housing, but similar to the same density that would be permitted outright as a C zoning district. The proposed density is at seven point oh nine units an acre, and C permits seven point two six, so slightly under what they're requesting, but all in all, about seven units per acre is what would be allowed under the C zoning and what they're proposing under a DD zoning. The scale and building, the scale of the buildings and adjacent to single-family home, they are proposing two-story buildings, which again is compatible with surrounding properties. So we'll go back to this plan here. I'll be happy to answer any questions. As far as the process goes, if the future land use map is changed, then the zone change would come through. They are all public hearings, of course, the zone change, and ultimately a final development plan meeting, that is the opportunity to tune in, you know, fine-tune the details of the specific development, but tonight we're strictly focused on land use and if we think it's appropriate.
Are you giving us to the trustees, then, or the county?
Correct, for the future land use. If that went through and was approved, then it would start with a zone change at regional planning, come back to the zoning commission for a zone change, and then at the trustees.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions?
I accept your case. On your first page, you state to the south, single-family residence, but under picture with the color code, it shows it's transitional to the south.
And that is correct, so the zoning and the current use is sing, single-family, but in our comprehensive plan, we do identify it as transitional residence. So if that property were involved with this project, we would also encourage a zone change for those properties.
But right now, it's not, it's not transitional to the south?
Correct. No, it is transitional to the south, but it's zoned, single-family.
Paul, can you actually put the land use plan map back up there, because I had a question about that as well?
Make sure I'm going to the right, actually.
And that's what I was, I was looking for in the legend. Yeah, what is the brown?
The brown is actually multi-family.
Is that the same brown? Thank you for pulling it up.
No, I'm sorry, it's transitional mixed use, not multifamily. So transitional mixed use, the definition of that is moderate density detached housing, low-intensity office uses, such as a conversion of single-family residences and other similar uses. It's also a transition. So, you know, on Beechmont Avenue, the red is general mixed use, then it goes to transitional mixed use, which did not allow attached housing, that was part of the reason why the previous applicant in 2019 asked for transitional residence, because that does permit attached housing. So I'm sorry for the confusion there.
No, thank you, Paul, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, so that should, that category is not the same brown, you're right.
We'll start, Mr. Guyer, did you have any questions for staff?
Mr. Ellis? Paul did answer one about the history of it that was recited in the applicant's letter, and I think I heard you confirm that. But my question for you, for the staff, is on these two acres we're looking at, it looks like within recent history, 2019 anyway, there was specific attention paid to a couple of these lots that are now transitional residential, and was, my question is, these two that we're looking at tonight, were they considered during the land use plan? Because it looks like we're going lot by lot here at this point, and I'm just wondering if you have any recollection if that was specifically talked about back then, when we're not in the context of a potential development?
So between, with our update in 2022, there was actually a subdivision that was approved that included these two lots. It was called Dacey's Landing originally, and then I think they changed names, I mean, Bird Court, thank you. That was approved by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, the improvement plan was approved, they just never moved forward with... The improvement plan was approved. They just never moved forward with the record plan. I think that was where it stopped. So the, that development had a public road coming in through here. It had lots feeding off of the south of that road and then there were single family lots to the north here. So to answer your question, when we updated the land use plan in twenty twenty two, those lots were not in consideration because we had an active subdivision that was already approved and was nearing the record plan stage. And so we felt that that development was moving forward, which it didn't.
I understand. Okay. That's it. Mr. Guyer, any questions? Paul, I, again, thank you for pointing out the change and the not change in density from the previous project to this. I think that's really important. But I just want to make sure that I'm reading right to that office, commercial and industrial uses. This is land use. This isn't zoning, but they are not included in this traditional, transitional zone, right?
Correct.
Transitional district.
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you. The only other question I had was, I noticed your pictures and then the applicants also saying that the site is currently in ice or are there any plans to address this pre-development and clean that lot up?
So essentially if a lot becomes vacant, there's no requirement to mow it. They were mowing or someone was mowing up along the roadway, but basically you can reforce and renaturalize. And that's what it's been doing.
It's almost done.
Unfortunately, to go from that point, from going to a point of a mowed yard to get to the point of a natural area, is unpleasant to say the least, especially for those neighbors. And I agree, the basements should have been filled. One, the, the previous owner had put fencing around them, but then the deer knocked it over. So yes, the basement should have been filled, but there wasn't a requirement for that either. So yes, it has been an ugly site, but it was allowed to go back to natural. They're not required to maintain a vacant lot.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions for staff?
I had one quick one. Sorry, I forgot. Paul, on your staff report, you said that the used transitions building will need to be stepped down from the uses on Beachmont to the south. What did you mean by stepped down? Do you mean like physical height of it stepping down or intensity stepped down? What was your thinking there?
Both. Yes.
Okay.
Both. This particular area, you have the Speedway up at the corner. You have the former McCall's kind of warehouse building. The old McCall's building, I think is, is two and a half stories, maybe three. But you could go higher on Beachmont than what's currently there. So the idea of a transition residence is lower scale, more residential in character with what's already there.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Ely. At this point, the applicants, welcome to come up and make a presentation if you have one and entertain some questions.
Good evening. My name is Josh Platt with John Henry Homes. I'm going to try and be, Paul covered a lot of.
Can I also add your address?
Oh, one one zero two five Reed Hartman Highway. So I'm going to try and pivot a little bit. Paul did a great job with his presentation and instead of being redundant, so I'm going to cut out the parts that he's already covered with you guys. So. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our company. Actually, first, the site, we inherited the site conditions, by the way. We've tried to have, they're supposed to be getting cut and hopefully it looks a little bit better than we, than we'll be closed on the property. So. Our company, John Henry Homes, is a Cincinnati company. We're locally owned. We've been in business for thirty years. It's owned by me and my brother, John, who's right here. Started nineteen ninety three. We're recognized consistently by the Business Currys, one of the largest builders in the city. We've earned multiple awards for our building from the Home Builders Association. We've participated in the community and active in the Home Builders Association. I was the president of the Home Builders Association. I've served on the board of the National Association of Home Builders and the Ohio Home Builders Association. My brother's also been on the board of the Home Builders Association. We've also participated in built multifamily projects in the city and I'll tell you about those in a second. And then the fun fact about our company, we did extreme makeover. We were one of the companies selected by them to build a house in four days for a family in need, which was a pretty cool experience. For multifamily, which is probably what is more relevant for you guys to know is we did a, we've done three projects. One in downtown Loveland, which is called Loveland Station. If you've been there, it's where the Graders is. It's pretty well known and that was a failed site in the heart of downtown Loveland. And it was passed over by multiple builders and it's now a very successful project in their, in their core. And there's been a lot of development that's been done around it. Secondly, we took a abandoned lumberyard in Milford, which is Riverwalk Flats and turned that into a hundred and nine units. And that also is really spurred a lot of development. If you go down to Milford now, that's lots of activity in the streets there. There's a lot of people there and this, and there's been a lot of other developments with microbrewers and stuff like that that really started after that. Most relevant to this site is we did in downtown Mason, we did a project called Mason Oaks, which is forty four townhomes. And that was an abandoned site just outside of their downtown. And they, Mason was really trying to get development downtown. They still are. But this, we did forty four townhomes there, which provided a transition from the residential district to their business district. And they're actually now, because of this, doing a land use plan, a downtown land use plan. So with us tonight, we've got Jim Watson with McGill Smith Punchin, who's our engineer. We've got Tony Ragnoni with TRA Design, who's, would be our architect on these projects. So again, you know, the gist of what we're asking for tonight is, instead of going through the whole project, is we're asking for the two parcels to be brought into the same zoning, into the same map, into the same requirement on the map as the rest of the parcels, so that we can do a comprehensive plan for this site. So that when, we don't try and develop the other part, the other five acres separately than we do with this part. If the, if it's approved, if we do get the map amendment, our plan is to come back and ask for approval for thirty six townhouses. The townhouses are really, really high end. They're luxury with granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. Everybody has an, has their own attached private garage. They're really geared for empty nesters. They're people who live in the area now, but they don't, they don't have the responsibility of owning their house anymore. They want to be able to leave and go on vacation or they want to move to Florida for a little bit. And this gives them the ability to stay close to family and friends, which they can't do. It's pedestrian friendly. It looks like a sub, with the stuff we do, looks like a subdivision from the outside. It will have a monument at the street. It's very heavily landscaped. There's professional landscaping that maintains our landscaping throughout the year. So that's really the gist of, I do, let me just touch real quick on the history on this. So there was the multifamily project with a three story high rise with twenty four units of structured parking and thirteen additional lots that failed. The other one was a single family site, which is actually how we became involved in this project. Another builder was, it was shopped around for all the builders in town. By the time it got to us, every builder in town had passed on it. The site just, it doesn't work for single family homes. And I mean, every builder looked at it, passed on this thing. So we liked it. We feel that this, what we did on Mason Oaks is very applicable to this site. And I think there's a lot of potential for it. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Just real quick, I do have a rendering of what our concept looks like, which is seventh, I think it's the seventh slide. There you go. Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Guyer, any questions?
I don't have any.
Yes. Thanks for that information on your company. It's very interesting. And love the two, you mentioned Loveland Station. Is that rental or is that for sale?
It's rental.
And is Riverwalk Flats is rental?
Yeah, all, all three of these projects I mentioned are rental projects.
And this would be rental?
This would be rental.
With the concept plan, it looks like there's fourteen parallel parking on the East West Drive.
I'm not sure the exact count, but there's a little bit of parking there.
Is there any on the North South Drive at this point in time?
There, there's, there's not. Each unit had, but each tenant would have, has a garage space and a driveway space. So we expect our tenants to park in their own driveways. It's really visitor parking is what that is.
Only question, have you already had discussions with Marjorie Florco of the lot to the west? Is that under consideration at all?
We, we tried to reach out. When we started looking after the single family, we got, we got no response. We actually had somebody trying to go reach out to them and I think the previous owner tried to reach out as well and said he had no luck with either. So it'd be great. We wish we did, we wish we could.
Right. Thank you. I don't have any questions for you there. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
At this point, we can open up the podium to the audience members who may wish to speak in favor of the project. And just as a little bit of point of order, I just, I do want to remind the audience that we're talking about a change to the land use map. We're not talking about actually building these units. We're not in a design review at this point and nitpicking densities and sidewalks and anything of that nature. But we are looking at changing the land use map to allow for traditional residence, which then paves the way for rezoning. So there are multiple steps to this project and this is the very, very preliminary step tonight. I just wanted to remind folks of that before they come up. Thank you. And seeing no members who want to speak in favor of the project, are there any who would wish to speak not in favor of the project? Please come up, state your name, address and any affiliation to the project.
My name's George Sullivan. I live at twelve ninety four Eight Mile Road. I live right across from where they plan on building. My main concern is actually like the traffic is one of my main concerns. The traffic from Beachmont coming up Eight Mile, if you go there every night, like it, it, like five o'clock, whatever, the traffic backs up all the way from Beachmont, all the way up to the back of the hill. So it's a good eighth mile that it backs up and it backs up there almost every night during the week. And then not only does the traffic back up, then we got, I'm getting nervous. It's like the construction that they, they plan on building there, it's, it's going to just change the whole area. And then if you got that much traffic coming in there and coming down, it just, it's too much traffic for that, for that street. And let's see. And then you got Speedway. They're planning on expanding, aren't they? The Speedway on Beachmont, that's why they bought Mac McCall's Carpet Place and all that property. And then, and if they do that, then you're actually going to get twice as much traffic at that intersection. So then you're dealing with massive traffic and it's not set up for it. And what they're going to do with all that property is just make a bottleneck and we, we won't get out of there. And then actually with the amount of traffic that's been there already, oh man, within the last month, there's been what, two accidents, two main accidents already, right there in front of my house. And one of the neighbor's dogs got loose when cars going so fast, ran, ran him over and killed him. So it's like the amount of traffic going through there, it's just unreasonable. And if you put this building complex in there, it's going to be twice as bad. And it's not like they took the time to come and talk to each of the residents. It's like, well, come, I'll talk to you, try to get your permits to build what they want to build and move on. But you know, it's a neighborhood and most of people like, they're living next to me. The guy is like eighty something years old. The guy next to him is seventy five years old. It's like we've been there our whole lives. And yet they don't take two minutes to come and talk to us and ask us, what do you think about us putting this in right across the street from you? But they'll take the time, they'll come, they'll dress you, they'll talk everything, business and everything with you. But they don't talk neighborhood. They don't care about our neighborhood. It's a building project. I can understand that. They're a good builder. So when it comes to building, it would be a great project that they'd build, but it's not a community project. They could care less about our community. They care about that property. I mean, really, if, if I was going to do something, if I was going to do something here in Anderson Township, well, I'd have to come and talk to you guys first. I wouldn't wait till there's a meeting. I wouldn't think of you as secondary people. I wouldn't think of you as, so what, I'm going to make a bunch of money.
Sir, with apologies, we need to keep it to the facts and not these.
Okay. They come in, they want to build this project. They don't care about the neighborhood. They don't care about the people that live in the neighborhood and it's not right. That's the facts.
Thank you. And just to remind you, there will be additional meetings to actually speak about many of those.
Those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other audience members who'd like to speak in opposition, please do so.
My name is Jay Moore. I live at thirteen eleven Eight Mile Road. So I'm back to private drive beside the development. Appreciate you all. I may talk to you. So before I get started, I want to clarify a few things, just to came up from the staff report. The original project, I don't think the twenty four condos ever got approved. And if they did, the land use plan, if you could go back to the, the site plan for this, if we don't mind. So I wasn't prepared to talk about it, but I do have the documents from twenty eighteen. So the thirty six units for this property are actually in the same land that thirteen properties were on before because there's storm detention and parking. So while the math works out, the density is close. You can go where the, the stormwater one. The density only works out because we switched from single family to townhomes or multifamily. So we are, my neighbors, we're directly changing the look and feel of the neighborhood. So. All right. So one thing that Mr. Hanson brought up, this is about land use. I'm not going to say anything bad about John Henry Homes. If you know them, they're a great company. They're going to build a beautiful product. So I'm not going to say bad about them, but I do want to talk about land use. We made a mistake in our neighborhood. We didn't stand up for land use. When Dr. Rogers came before us, most of us, myself included, probably used him as a dentist. Didn't really want to get on his bad side because, well, he drills in our mouth. So we came before, talked about land use on the property that is south. And I thought, oh, okay. He shows what he's going to do. We trust him. Why would we really, really put up a big fight over this? Because he said he's going to put single family homes in there. No one wanted single family homes. We all liked the four homes over there. We all liked our neighbors. But okay, we're not going to put up a fight. He lives right there. He's our dentist. All right, fine. We can say, fine, we'll let the land use go and then we'll argue. Well, now we've come back again, we're talking about land use the second time. Like I said, John Henry Homes is a great company. They don't work on my teeth. They're not putting me under anesthesia. I really want to stop this land use change on those two pieces of property. So in a little, a couple of things I want to talk about quickly, and I'll try not to bore you all. One, the staff does an awesome job. Comprehensive planning does an awesome job. They just reviewed the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty two. According to the comprehensive plan, I think we talked to something like eight thousand comments, spent better than a year working on it and said, this is the plan we want. In that plan, those two lots were left to single families, what's it called, residential use. So I'd say, great, somebody did a lot of work and somebody said, fantastic, what we got here is exactly what we want. I don't see any reason to change that now. Two, sorry, I'm going to bounce around slightly. Part of, from the staff notes that I want to highlight. Part of the idea is that transitional use is a step down from Beachmont Avenue. Step down and... Sorry, step down infers to me that my neighbors live on Cherry Lane or somehow in a commercial district. They're not. Their property has been identified long-term as a different use than it currently is. That doesn't mean that what's across the street all of a sudden is a transition. They're already in the transition, and we should stop that now, not let it continue. The homes on Cherry Lane are a single-family. They're well-kept. Cup on the corner of Eight Mile and Cherry Lane, not so much. But the rest of the drive, well-kept. Family's been there for years and years to years. So what we're really asking to do is to put a multifamily rental project in the middle, as the staff report says, page one, north, south, east, west. Single-family residents, single-family residents, single-family residents, single-family residents. There's not a transition area. It's a new development in a single-family neighborhood. Finally. And I want to... Sorry, I have to get to my notes. I want to make sure I end with this. I was reading the comprehensive plan. They've been working on this since 2005, updated every five years, got updated in another five years. Like I said, we failed before because we trusted what our neighbor said, and that's fine. And I still believe if he could have made it work financially, it would have been great. I don't think it's your all's job to know if we can make it work financially or not. I know for the 30... I've been there 31 years, for 28 of that, there were four single-family homes on that property. They were all occupied the entire time, till one lady passed away. And then all the other homes were torn down in the hope that makes them money. So there's no reason to think that we can't build more homes back there, or we can't go with the plan that was already approved with 14 homes, which less than ideal, but we can't stand in the way of that, so... That said, I appreciate your time. If they think I can answer, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
For Mr. Moore, which is... And you can just stop me if they're here. Is your neighbor to the south, Marjorie Florco trustee here? Do you know?
Uh, no. No.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If we have any other audience members who'd like to speak in opposition to the project, the podium is open.
Hello, I'm Matt Smith. I reside at 1278 Windstone Court. This project is basically right across the street. I just want to reiterate that the traffic there on Eight Mile is already bad enough. It's dangerous to walk there, cars coming out of Speedway. And with 36 new homes, you're not going to help anybody be a little bit safer. I moved to this area because I like the way it is, not because I want to come in and change it. You change it, we're not going to like it as much. That's all there is. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other audience members who'd like to speak in opposition to the project?
Hi, my name is Debbie Porta, and we live on Shinstone. And...
Could I get your address, Ms.?
I'm sorry?
Your address.
8488 Shinstone Drive.
Thank you.
And Eight Mile is, traffic-wise, do any of you live in this area?
Miss, 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 address the commission, please.
The Eight Mile, as you know, is one of the few roads that go from our south side of the township to the north side. You can go from the river to 32. That brings a lot of traffic. The intersection there at Eight Mile and Beauchamp is probably only second highly populated to Five Mile interchange. You're putting this, all these homes that are going to be bringing in more traffic onto Eight Mile. I just don't think this is a fit. I think if any of you drive Eight Mile, you know, going, driving south on Eight Mile to Beauchamp, turning right is already a headache, because there's no right-hand turn. I just think it's really going to add a lot of traffic.
Thank you. Are there any other audience members who'd like to speak in opposition this evening? Seeing none, we can close the public comment portion of the meeting and open it up to discussion amongst the commission, if there is discussion. Mr. Guyer?
This question is probably for Paul. In the comprehensive plan, or anywhere, I don't know if this is the right plan, but is there anything that specifically addresses the need for rental or multifamily housing more so than single-family housing?
It doesn't differentiate between owner-occupied versus rental. In the housing section in the chapters, it does talk about the need for diverse style of housing. We are meeting that with some of the apartment complexes that are under construction currently, Stonegate, Vantage, Skytop. Those are meeting a segment of the township population. This meets a different segment of the population. It's a different style of housing. So to answer your question, it does speak to the need for diverse styles of housing. It doesn't specifically say the numbers of units that we need and the specific types of units that we need.
Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, quite a few thoughts on this one. It was kind of a tough one, actually, when I got the packet. So hearing the developer speak and some of the comments were really helpful. But I am a little bit worried about this change for a couple of reasons. One is, I asked the question, and then the resident, Mr. Moore, pointed out, and he was apparently involved with the planning, that this has been looked at from a planning standpoint. That's what's great about planning, is because it's done in an objective environment, there's not pressure for development to occur, and a lot of people are taking a look at the situation to see what the best plan for it is. And I realize here in the township, and it makes sense, we have a process to update the plan, which would lay the groundwork for a rezone. But in the context of a redevelopment, really telegraphing, in my opinion, if you approve this, or if we recommend approval of it, that's telegraphing to the developer, yeah, it's looking pretty good. And I'm a little worried about doing that. In fact, I'm not comfortable doing that, honestly, with this one. One, for one example, tonight is the first night I saw what their product looked like, and I haven't seen it in context. I haven't seen the one up in Mason. And that's a little bit beside the point. I totally get it, we're not at that point yet. But if we get past this point, we're going to be at that point in a couple of months, depending on what the board of trustees do. Secondly, normally, the board knows, the residents don't know this, but the board knows, normally, traffic is not something we really have jurisdiction to consider, because traffic is traffic, and that is a global problem, not a developer's individual problem. But in this case, that is a bad traffic area. And no doubt about it, it's a tough traffic area. And somebody commented, and I agree with her. Usually, I'm going to say, take the position, it's like, hey, it meets the underlying density, it looks pretty good. Well, it does meet the underlying density, because that parcel to the west has got a lot of topo in it, nobody's going to build over there. So that gets your density offset and allows you to compress the townhomes here. Usually, that's not a bad idea, it makes property usable. But in this case, I tend to agree. This is not... A couple of things. One, this is not the location where we want to maximize traffic for this unique development. And two, this board's been very accommodating of, and very supportive of multifamily, including multifamily rental, in the right spots. This one, this spot here, in my view, looking at that area, yeah, it could be a vulnerable location. And the right development could make it not vulnerable, or the wrong development can make it vulnerable. I'm not saying this is a right or wrong development, but I'm not sure this is the spot I'm going to pick for, you know, a new rental development here. I think, I also agree with the point that if we pick up these two properties, there's not a transition anymore. It's single-family, and then it's... Townhouses right next door. Where's the transition there? And I'm also worried a little bit about skipping over Cherry Lane. I realize, long-term, you know, I think when this plan was done, I would speculate Cherry Lane was part of the mix. It's like, let's get Cherry Lane to go, and we've got these two, then we hit these larger lots, single-family, we're good to go. And I think this changes the dynamic. And then the last thing I want to say is, if this goes, undoubtedly, this Marjorie Florco trustee property, we're stuck. We had made a decision for that one, too, by virtue of basically surrounding it with transitional, and I wouldn't be surprised if we would see a request for that. So I don't really feel good making these comments, but I am concerned, I guess I really don't support this here. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Jay?
I agree with some of what Mr. Ellis said. I believe we're quite early in the process, and concerns can be raised by the trustees, by anyone in county. But if we deny it, there's more information to be resolved and delivered. So at this point, it's a land use, and it is a tight fit, it is a traffic. But at this point, you need more information, rather than for me just to say no.
Mr. Gothard?
Yeah, I mean, I think the land use currently, where we have the Beauchamp, and we have the transitional mixed use, and we currently have the traditional or transitional residential use, we're only looking at the extension of that Riverwalk there on here. It is a very odd sort of configuration of that transition. But you know, we're not sort of setting up a whole new use with this case here tonight with this, you know, sort of procedure. We're just sort of extending what the current land use identifies. It is a very tricky thing, because it is currently surrounded all by single-family, you know, quite frankly. But again, that land use south of Cherry Lane is set up for a different use in the future. And I think we have to kind of understand that as we're looking at this case for tonight. And I agree with all the other commissioners, it is a very, very difficult sort of use because of the current occupants and the current use of those, but looking at the land use, that's what I'm looking at. So just my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, and somewhat of an extension of what Mr. Gothard said is that we are, tonight, looking at taking the existing land use designation and extending it to parcels north. It's a little bit kind of funny, in that usually we're frustrated, because we don't have enough information in front of us to make quality decisions. And here, we're presented with maybe an abundance of information, which is clouding some of our judgment. And as someone who lives in some of the states off of Eight Mile, right down the street, you know, traffic will be an issue. But I actually don't think tonight's the right place to be talking about that yet, and they are going to have to deal with that. And that's going to present its own myriad challenges as we go through this process. So that's really kind of the extent of my comments. And happy to entertain a motion, if there is one, if there's more discussion.
Motion to approve the staff's recommendations. I need to read out the case two days to three, LUP, for 1291 and 1398 Eight Mile Road.
Thank you, Jay. I'll second that motion.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
No.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda was a public hearing for a major modification. That application has been withdrawn. So if there is no new business, can entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So the vote is rated two, the motion passes. It will be heard at the trustees' meeting on November the 16th. You'll still get a notice. If you receive a notice for tonight, you'll still receive another notice for that one. But their meeting is on November the 16th at 5:30, same room. There will be a sign put on the property again, and the property owners will be tuned if you would just want to.
Thank you, Paul. Motion to adjourn? So moved.